relations. My grace is heavenly, Father, we thank you again for another day. We thank you, Father, for all the many blessings that you have so generously disposed upon us. We just ask that you continue to be with us, guide us, and direct us. Father, as we welcome a new member to our police department, a new chief, who will guide and direct our officers, who will help to keep our citizens safe, bring new ideas to our police department, we just ask that you would watch over him and his family. We welcome them to our community. And we just pray that good things will come from his guidance and his wisdom here in our town. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next items, we need to accept the business agenda. If everyone's had an opportunity to review it, if there are no conflicts, like to hear a motion from someone to approve it as it is presented.
I make a motion to accept the business agenda as stated.
Motion by Councilman Bell.
Second.
Who's that? Second by Councilman Stainback. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The agenda will be approved as it is presented. Our next item is special recognition. And before I call on the city manager to introduce our new police chief, I'd like to welcome Mr. Farby here tonight. Most of you all know Carl. He served on the city council for 20-plus years, 20-plus years. Many of those, he was the mayor pro temp, and he also served this city at the state level, as well as on many other boards and committees and things. So Carl, thank you for being with us tonight. Thank you. Ms. Trainum?
Up with Mr. Lawrence Wiggins out of South Carolina, who brings a diverse background and experience in law enforcement and military experience in the background as well. And so we're really excited to have you here and welcome you aboard.
Chief Wiggins, is there anything you'd like to say at this time? Yeah, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but you're welcome to speak if you'd like.
First off, I would like to say, um, thank you to the council, to the manager, Ms. Trainum. My experience here with the city has been up and down first class. The staff and the police department have been more than accommodating and welcoming. Everyone here is accepting me with open arms. I am truly grateful. That includes all the departments as well. So I'm excited to be here. I look forward to working with this council, the city manager, the department heads, my staff, to help continue to make Roanoke Rapids a safe place to raise family, and consider relocating to, and to be an example to other communities around with a prosperous and safe community.
All right. Thank you, sir. Captain Phillips?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. We're here tonight to talk about K-9 Rudy. Before I get into his description, I would like to give a run. 2018. Roanoke Rapids received him in October of 2019. His first day of work was December 12th, 2019. His first seizure was file arms, file arm, which was an article search. That was in December of 2019. It was in U.S. currency. Fifty file arms through vehicle searches where file arms were located as a result of a positive alert. Numerous successful tracks of wanted individuals. And the largest, the largest seizure that Rudy alerted to and found was in March of 2024, where he located seven kilos of cocaine. K-9 Rudy has faithfully served the city of Roanoke Rapids since December of 2019, and has recently retired due to medical issues. It is customary for retired service animals to be given to their handler, and city council has done this in the past. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute 160A-266, is appropriate for the city council to declare K-9 Rudy surplus prior to awarding him to his handler, Curtis Bachelor. Resolution number 2025.01 is attached for your review consideration. And I have paid the $1 for the surplus fee to Madam Clerk.
Motion for that. Okay.
Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Strickland.
I'd like to make a motion declaring K-9 Rudy a surplus property and awarding him to Curtis Bachelor for $1.
Okay, motion by Councilman Strickland. Do you hear second to the motion?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Bryant. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion will be approved. Thank you for your report, and thank you for Rudy's service.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. We appreciate it.
tonight. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ephraim Brodsky. I live at 9367th Street in Roanoke Rapids. This is my son Samuel Brodsky. And I'm here to speak about the police. Recently, we had an event at my son's school, Manning Elementary School, where an off-duty Roanoke Rapids police officer came and was more than mean to the children. It happened a few months ago at first, and the cafeteria workers were then threatening the children that they would bring the mean police officer back if they acted up. Last week, on a Monday, possibly two weeks ago, the police officer came back when Mr. Hinton was off that day. And my children came home devastated, and they were telling me that two dozen children were crying, that the police officer had raised his voice and said, "I'm getting angry, and you don't want to see me when I'm angry." And yes, this was at the school. It wasn't at the police department. But this was a Roanoke Rapids Police Department police officer in his off-duty capacity, working at the school with a gun and a badge representing the city of Roanoke Rapids. Now, where I'm from up north, we have a process called the Civilian Complaint Review Board, where anybody that wants to make a complaint can go in, lodge a complaint, fill out the paperwork, and the Civilian Complaint Review Board is required to review the complaint and let the people know how it was adjudicated. Now, as soon as this happened with my children, my children came home very upset. My older child told me he was crying. My younger child told me that many children in his class, and they're in different grades, by the way, was, were also crying. I brought this to Councilman Stainback, who was in the police department for 30 years, and he told me he would take care of it. And the next day, he went to the police department, and several parents had already complained. And they decided, okay, this officer's not going to be allowed back at the school, and that was supposed to be the end of it. For me, that's not enough, for logical grievances, because I have a lot of them. I really do. And nobody seems to want to listen to logic because in small towns, everybody's connected. Everybody knows each other. Everybody's in business with each other. And what one person says could impact a lot of people. So I'm here to say it ends now. It ends now. I'm going to run for city council when the council two seat opens, and hopefully one person can make a difference. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brodsky. All right, we need to approve the March the 4th, 2025 regular meeting minutes. Is someone ready to make a motion to do that?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve March 4th, 2025.
For fiscal year 2425, from Gregory T. Redmond, to perform our city's audit. The price has not changed from last year. It's the same as it was last year.
Are you ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We got to find it in the book first. We're so fast.
Let's see, page. You got it?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the LUT engagement contract with Gregory T. Redmond, CPA, to conduct the audit of the city's financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2025, and to authorize the mayor to execute the engagement LUT and contract.
I second that.
Okay, you got a motion by Councilman Jackson, and a second by Councilman Stainback. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The motion will be approved. All right, thank you, ma'am. And you have the next couple of items also.
Right. This is consideration of a budget amendment for the library. They received a donation for the children, for the summer reading program, for the children's program. So I would like to request you adopt ordinance number 2025.08 in the amount of $500 for the children's program at the library.
Okay, do we hear such a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance number 2025.08 in the amount of $500 for the children's program at the library.
Second.
That motion is by Councilman Bell, and is second by Mayor Pro Tim Bryant. Any more discussion on the matter? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The motion will be approved. Item C.
So the police department received OSC unauthorized substance abuse money. So I would like the council to adopt ordinance number 2025.09 in the amount of $8,967.85 for the OSC unauthorized substance tax.
Okay. Need a motion to approve the OSC unauthorized substance tax money?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025.09 in the amount of $8,967.85 for OSC unauthorized substance tax.
Okay, the motion is by Ms. Bryant. Do you hear second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Stainback. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion will be approved. Item D, surplus item.
Thank you.
Mr. Chalka?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I come to you tonight for your consideration of a resolution approving surplus items. That resolution is attached, and I'll read a few details from it. There are six total units. There's a 2005 Chevy Blazer. There is a 2003 Ford Expedition, 2006 Chevy Truck. There's a Dodge Charger. I think it's a 1997 model. There is a Volvo wheel loader. And there is a JCB Baco. Two pieces of equipment. So with that in mind, I'm requesting you to officially declare these vehicles as surplus and authorize the sale by electronic auction under Resolution 2025.02.
Okay, we need a motion about that request.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution Number 2025.02 to officially declare the vehicles as surplus and authorize the sale by electronic auction.
Okay, the motion is by Councilman Stainback. Second to his motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Strickland?
Yes.
Okay, second by Councilman Strickland. Any more discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion will be approved. Thank you, Mr. Chalka, and Ms. Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. How are you? Today I bring before you a resolution in opposition of North Carolina Senate Bill 382, specifically Part III, Sub Part 3K, entitled Local Government: The Downzoning Provision. North Carolina Senate Bill 382 was initially ratified by the General Assembly in November of 2024. Governor Cooper vetoed the bill. However, the General Assembly overrode the veto in December of 2024. The downzoning provision effectively eliminates the authority of any local government to downzone any parcel without written consent of its owners, and places the authority with any individual affected property owner or part owner who may object to a change in the zoning ordinance or map amendment. This will allow one property owner who cannot be found or who decides not to consent to veto the good faith planning decisions of elected officials, developers, and the will of a majority. Senate Bill 382 would make it impossible for local governments to approve important text amendments or rezonings that impact large groups of property owners. Written consent from all property owners is a requirement under this bill. Local governments could incur significant expenditures in both time and money for the consideration of any zoning amendments applicable. In summary, the bill restricts the crucial ability of municipalities to self-govern in planning and land use regulations, consequently undermining tailor-made responses to community needs, will impede government-initiated downzoning, limiting strategic development adaptations necessary for managing growth effectively. There could be misalignment with our strategic community objectives, which could endanger balance and sustainable development endeavors. Due to these items identified, staff strongly oppose the incorporation of North Carolina Senate Bill 382, Part III, Sub Part 3K, as it could complicate local government efforts to achieve optimal planning outcomes. Thank you for your consideration. And subject to your questions, that concludes my report.
I have a question, Ms. Anderson.
Yes, sir.
Since we had an audience here, people who haven't read this, the bill, and basically the terms at which it was developed, could you give us a real relevant example of what would it be an example which may be imposed upon the city?
Yeah, absolutely. So for an example, if the, our local government decided to make some initiatives to encourage zoning, to kind of mold everything together with what we feel is appropriate for our community. Every property owner within that zoning district would have to be notified and consent in writing before we could approve it. Every owner. Not one person can not consent to that in order to do it. It would be the same with developers. If you're trying to rezone a block, for example, and one person on that block, for example, say someone is deceased even, and the property hasn't been allocated to anyone at this point, then that would count as a negative towards that. So it could really, really impact us moving forward.
So I can, I can add to that if Council is interested. So I think a lot of times people don't appreciate zoning as much as maybe they should. Zoning is the, is the reason that, living in a residential neighborhood, that you don't have, you know, somebody putting up a gas station next to you, or, you know, opening a factory. All of our land use regulations are tied into our zoning code. And this, this bill essentially makes it much more difficult for a city to pass new zoning regulations. And Ms. Anderson kind of pointed it out, but just, just by way of example, the city does not have zoning requirements, that the subject properties are given notice. They are allowed to come to a public hearing. This is different. This is going to require actual consent. So not just, you know, we're going to have a hearing, you can have your voice heard and make a decision. You've got to have consent from everybody. And so many times, one of the things that, and we don't see it, you know, that it's been years since the city has, has had to collect its own taxes. We have an agreement with the county where they do that. And so when somebody doesn't pay their taxes, the county is the one that forecloses on that. Well, the county attorney does, in his office, spends a lot of time sometimes tracking down the heirs to heir property and getting them served in those foreclosure actions. And so you will see, you will see foreclosure actions sometimes where the list of parties, the list of heirs, goes on to the second page. And so, I mean, I can just envision the administrative burden that this would create. You know, and just, just by way of example, of things that, you know, you may want to change or alter in the zoning code. I mean, I, I remember, I wasn't city attorney at the time, although I was working with our former city attorney, Mr. Chichester at the time, when the city took up the electronic gaming ordinance. You know, that was something that didn't previously exist in our code, that we had to amend and react to a situation that hadn't existed up to that point. To, you know, not, and, you know, generally zoning can't ban an activity outright that is otherwise legal, but the purpose of zoning is to control uses and to organize those, not only to, you know, help individuals be able to exercise their use and enjoyment of those properties, but then also too, to preserve property values, to create, to create good situations for communities and for families, and then for businesses also, by regulating where and when certain uses can take place. You know, again, you can't open a bar in a, in a residential area. That's, our zoning code is that function. And so I would strongly encourage council to consider this. I know it's, it's not, it's not every day that we, that a city government comes before the, or city staff come before the municipal government and ask, for instance, in our case, city council to pass a resolution objecting to something that the legislature has done. But this is a, this is coming before every municipality in North Carolina that has zoning regulations and is a concern to anyone that has planning departments and, and planning boards. I mean, we have a whole architecture here, and a whole, a whole process for considering land uses and getting them before council, or getting them to the planning board, and weighing the different factors and the different interests involved. And this is going to make that process much, much more difficult for what, at least seems to me, and seems to many other folks, to be very little benefit to, to the general public. And so I would, I would strongly encourage council to, to consider it.
Anybody have any questions? The city attorney or the planning director? So is this, this very similar to, like, when you try to annex an area? Don't you pretty much have to have 100% to do that now?
This, this would, would, really, the focus of this is, is you would have to get written consent. You would have to have, you would have to have every single, every, not only would you have to figure out who owns every single piece of property, rather than just going by, you know, whatever's on the tax records, which is essentially what we, I think, do now. You'd have to track down every single owner, even for owners that may have a 1/8 interest, or, you know, if it's, if it's truly heir property, could have like a 1/16th or a 1/32nd interest. And you'd have to get all 32 of those people in that example to, to sign off on, on this in writing, if, if this, you know, goes into law and stays in effect. And like I say, the administrative burden, even on a city our size, certainly on smaller municipalities, is, is, it would mean that you'd essentially have to hire staff to, to do that.
Okay, that's what I was about to ask. What you, would it incur some type of extra financial burden as far as hiring people to go out and do this, and especially like lawyers and things, and so where you may have to pay additional fees?
Correct.
Not in the budget that you estimated that you were going to need?
Right. It would absolutely add more to, not only administrative, but financially. But this would also impact things like, not just rezonings, but text amendments. So when we have these big land use updates, there's several counties and cities right now that are stalled because of this. They can't push it through because they have to have approval because it impacts the zoning. So there's 29 counties and 12 municipalities right now who have also submitted the same resolution and have been exempted.
Okay. And can I say something on the record? I've, I've had persons deal with something like this myself in a family, and when we looked, we were going back sometimes through about four generations trying to find the people, and it did cost quite excessive fees that we had to pay. So.
Okay, so when we, we asked for the motion, the motion to approve what this is, is to approve the opposition, correct?
Correct.
Okay, it's kind of one of those.
You approved the resolution. The resolution manifests, manifests city council's opposition to the Senate bill.
Okay.
And, and just particularly that particular part of the Senate bill. You know, it's like, it's like every other Senate bill, you know, there's a whole list of things in there, and this specific provision is the one that, that, you know, we have identified as being particularly objectionable, may not be the best word, but the best word, but particularly kind of difficult for a municipality to.
Okay, are council okay on this?
Yes.
If they are, we'll ask for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2025 dot zero three in opposition to Senate Bill 382, Part III, Session Law 2024 dash 57, SB 382.
Okay, motion by Councilman Bell. Do you hear second to his motion?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson. Any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion will be approved. Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you.
And Mr. Davis?
All right, so I've got the next agenda item. We took, we talked about this at the, I believe, the February 4th meeting, so just a little over a month ago, which was a proposal to create two traffic control officer positions here at the city. At that time, we didn't have a specific agreement. I just asked for a motion for some kind of expression of council will to try to enter negotiations with the school district. We've done that. The agreement that appears in your packet is the product of lengthy kind of back and forth and drafts going back and forth between me and the school board attorney. My understanding is, is that, is that this, this draft went before the school subcommittee, that's the relevant subcommittee, whose name escapes me right now, on, I believe, March 11th, and will go before the school board tonight for approval. I'm recommending that city council approve this. Essentially, what the agreement does is it creates two traffic control officer positions. As we discussed at
as we discussed at the April fourth meeting. Historically, the crossing guard services at, there are four schools that are located within the city. The high school isn't really in need of these services, but the two elementary schools, Manning and Belmont, thank you, and then the middle school, Chaloner, are in need of these, these services, and historically that's been provided by off-duty police officers. It has become diff, more and more difficult over the years, and just the, the changing nature of off-duty work, to provide those, those services or to make sure that we've got full coverage. There were some issues at the beginning of the school year that really has kind of prompted this discussion. Since that time, the, the, the police department has made a manful effort to try to cover the, the gaps in this for this school year. But this proposal is, is with an eye towards trying to get a more permanent solution to this problem, so that it's not, so that we're not having to scramble, and the police department isn't having to scramble every time. I mean, Captain Phillips, I, I talked to him this morning, we were talking about another matter for the city, and, and he was heading out there to, to, to do it, to do crossing guard services just today. And so essentially what this does is create two traffic control officer positions that will supplement the existing system. The Runnecrappis Great School District will reimburse the city for the full costs of the traffic control officer's wages and all startup costs. The agreement begins in July two thousand twenty-five and will cover for the next school year. Either party can exit the agreement within, with thirty days' notice. If we get into it and for some reason it's just not, it's just not working, we can exit that. As I said, this is a trial agreement. When it comes budget time, you know, the, the city will budget for those positions, and then, you know, we'll submit the bill to the school. There's some discussion there in the agreement about the logistics of all that. But essentially, that's the agreement in a nutshell. I know you've all had an opportunity to look at it. If you, if you have any specific questions, I'm, I'm perfectly willing to, to answer them. Like I said, this is something that we've been chewing over for, for several months, and certainly the, the text of this for the, the last month, so it, it is the product of, of some negotiation back and forth. And, and as I said before, it's always difficult when we, when you're dealing with, with two public boards, that it makes it, it, it adds a level of difficulty to these kind of negotiations, so.
Have you already presented this to the school board?
I have, and they, and I believe they're voting on it tonight.
Oh, okay, that, that was my next question.
It's already come through their subcommittee last week.
Okay. All right, when someone's ready to do so, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city and the Runnecrappis Great School District Board regarding traffic control officers, crossing guards, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Okay, the motion is by Councilman Bryant, who hears second to her motion.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bell. Is there any more discussion on the matter? There is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion will be approved. Thank you, Mr. Davis. I know it took a lot of time and effort to get, get that done, but we appreciate you doing it. I know it's been on everybody's mind, and we certainly want to take care of it and get it off to a good start next year. But thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Trainum, for your report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and citizens and guests. Just to highlight a few things, we have your departmental reports enclosed in there for reading, but just to go over a few things, again, we welcome your Police Chief Lawrence Wiggins. Also in the police department, on April the tenth, they will be having a fish fry fundraiser for the citizens on patrol. Plates are ten dollars apiece for Friday, April eleventh, for sale. Contact Captain Williams in the police department at five thirty-three, twenty-eight-ten to reserve your tickets. The public work staff have been really busy the last several days after downfall of rain that we incurred over the weekend. It's either dry or, or soaking wet here, it seems, but there's, when there's rainage, there's drainage, I've heard people say, but sometimes the water takes a little bit longer to go down the pipes, and so it causes some localized flooding issues. And so staff have been working to get those potential hazards cleared up, and then also with dangerous trees that end up resulting, some trees in the eight-hundred block of Carolina Street came down during the storm the other night, and so we appreciate our staff's efforts to clear that hazard during and after the event. The wildlife trapper has been contacted to mitigate some of the nutria overpopulation at Rochelle Pond, or the locals call it, I guess, the duck pond. Spring is here, the days are getting longer, and folks go out and take their kids and, and feed the ducks and the geese down at Rochelle Pond, but the nutria have continued to populate in that area and, and like treats as well. And so we've reached out for that in response to some complaints of the owners to help control that population. Our human resources department has been busy trying to prepare the final modules for the NeoGov software, employment software that we'll be utilizing here in the next couple months. During our next council meeting on the first of April, we will receive a presentation from a representative from the MAPS group that was, has developed an employee position and compensation study, and those findings will be presented during our next meeting. The planning and development department, their active code enforcement efforts up to reveal that the Quality Inn on Julian Alsbrook is slated for demolition due to some unsafe conditions that were observed. Demolition plans became immediately, I guess, or intentions became immediately known, but reconstruction is conceptualized, but plants for that are not immediately available. Over at State Side Landing Apartments on one fifty-eight, vertical construction is underway for several buildings for multifamily apartments. That will be provided for the affordable range for qualifying family occupants. This Thursday, the planning board will meet and welcome a new member, and then also go over some strategic priorities and training opportunities for the upcoming year. Our Parks and Recreation Department is busy planning a lot of spring events. There's several flyers that have been provided to you, I think, for tonight, but Easter egg hunts and other special events throughout the community, there's something for everyone going on, so keep a check on those schedules and those opportunities as well. Specifically, the Senior Center will have a scam jam to help increase awareness of scams against seniors on April the seventh, from nine until noon. And also, the Senior Center will have its own Easter egg hunt for the seniors on Wednesday, April the ninth, from three until four P.M. The library will have a spring craft for all ages on Tuesday, the twenty-second, at four thirty, to their makeup button snail, paper flowers, or more other activities. Staff are preparing for a baseball tournament to occur here at the end of June, and while it seems like it's several months away, the preparations are underway now. The days are getting longer with sunlight, and the fields are actively busy right now between baseball, softball, and soccer seasons, all competing for use of the fields and sharing the time as well. The fire department is, they're underway in preparing for the Fourth Annual Veterans Breakfast. That's always going to be on the first Friday in May, so this year will be on May the second at Kirkwood. All veterans are invited to attend, and there's no charge. Fire trucks are undergoing their annual inspections, and also host testing will occur next week, and then the annual hydrant testing will start in April. In additional matters, we will meet tomorrow. We'll open the doors at Kirkwood at eight thirty and start a presentation at nine o'clock. And we'll be at Kirkwood Adams tomorrow morning, but at nine o'clock, the presentation will begin, presented by the Hayes Group Consulting, funded through the R.C. Two Grant Award. And so we'll have some breaks scheduled throughout the day too, but we'll conclude no later than one thirty. And so we look forward to seeing you all tomorrow. And subject to any questions you may have, that concludes my report.
Anybody have any questions?
Do we have any further information on Emery Park?
There was, we're working with a group to get updated information on that. They did have a additional fundraiser over the weekend on Saturday up at TJ and the Skate Park in the Aquatics Center parking lot area, but those final numbers have not been updated just yet, but they'll be meeting with Mr. Kerr and some others here in the next few days.
Okay, just as soon as you know, let us know.
Yes, sir.
So in relation to Emery Park, we, we still, at least I do, and I know some of the council people, we, we get people asking us about it, and I know that we're on hold with the Skate Boy Park and, and a couple of other things that might be inside the fence, but is there any activity going on as far as maintenance over there at this time? It, it does not look like it is.
We are, is there something that we need to be doing? We can try to do that. We've just been waiting for us part of the start and hope that it does start through June. I do have scheduled a meeting with Justin Kerr at the beginning of next week, because I've asked him to provide me step-by-step with all the things that they need, as well as kind of like, you know, all the elements, and then also kind of a draft drawing of what they're looking for, so that we can get some accurate estimates, and then come back to council with where we are and where we need to be.
And I understand that. I, I'm speaking more about what outside the fence. I mean, I, I don't know if you've been over there lately, but the picnic tables are in poor condition. There's been no cleanup, looks like in a, in a good while, and it's supposed to be, you know, that part of it should be a park for people to, to come and play and enjoy it, and it is, it's just not very welcoming right now. And I would think as, as summertime gets here, more people would be using, it's a really, you know, it's a real nice park, and, you know, if we need to have a Saturday to get some, I know, you know, everybody says they don't have enough help. Well, if we don't, maybe, maybe we have people in town that would come over on a Saturday morning and work three or four hours, and I'm not talking about anything that would cost much money. I mean, just, you know, like your yard, you can get out and work a Saturday on it, make a lot of difference in it, and forty or fifty people working over there could make a lot of difference. So just see what we can do, you know, as, as it gets on, I mean, it's here now, the good weather's here for people to be getting out in. All right, thank you. Anything else? All right, thank you, Ms. Trainum. Finance report?
So for the month of February, general fund year-to-date receipts were around fifteen million, and expenditures were around thirteen million. So that leaves us, that revenues exceeded expenditures by two-point-four million. And the city's in good financial standing for February. We got our last material allotment of the abhorrent tax in February, so that was for the January collection. So it's critical that we hold as much as we can year-to-date to last us through the end of the year.
We need a motion to approve that. I can't find it in my book.
It's at the end.
There it is. All right, I'm getting that. Okay, so we don't need a motion for your report? Okay, anybody have any questions? Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
That concludes the agendas. Anything else on, anybody's mind that they want to bring before us tonight? If not, I call for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Stainback, second by Mr. Strickland. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Adjourn.